Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I should have introduced the meeting before we did that, but let me introduce the meeting now that I forgot to do that. Welcome. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission. Today's date is December 7th, and we are starting our meeting at seven, oh, excuse me, 6:31. So we've had the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Okay. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Sherman. There is one item that I have via Barbara that we should discuss, and if anybody else has any discussion items, we can make those changes now. And that is, we have an item for, under Old Business, Continued Review of the List of Property Owners. Barbara says that nothing much has changed. It's just the regular list that we saw last time, and recommended that we postpone that, any further discussion on that until our next meeting, which will be January 4th. Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
So if that's okay with the membership, then I would ask for a slight amendment to the agenda.
So amended.
And I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Thank you both. Any further discussion about this evening's agenda? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, public comment. I noticed that the Hubbards are present, but no one else from the public happens to be here. Do either of you have any comments that you would like to address to the Planning Commission before moving into the main purpose for why you're here? No public comment. Okay. That takes us down to the new business, the subdivision application review with Ted Hubbard. Let everybody get their... Plats unfolded, and then we'll move on and go through our subdivision. That's not it. Sheet two. Ted, if you want to just say a few words, orienting us to the request?
Well, this gives me away because I don't use on a sub...
Oops, hang on.
That's the same way.
Yeah, that's off the same one. All right. Though it was a second sheet, I'm not sure exactly why I have a second. Yeah, go ahead.
No, it's two acres that I want to cut out of my 190-plus acres.
Two acres out of 190?
Yes.
Okay.
Propose to put a house on there and give that two acres to my son as a wedding present.
Okay.
Existing right-ofways that we've used for years. Upgrade them a little bit.
Ted, I don't see a...
I don't know, the next view out, so to speak, you know what I mean? You know, you see the print we have here with the leach field on it and everything, but I mean, I'm not seeing where the right-ofway comes in from the road on this.
The top right corner, sir.
Pardon?
On the top right corner, there's a small...
Yeah, that's small map, but that really...
Can't find it on the detail.
Yeah, there's no detail on it. But so, but there's a deed or right-ofway through there to that?
Yes, my, my house I live in now is on Hubbard Lane Place, and that's a deed or right-ofway for my brother and I right now.
Okay, oh, okay.
That's off the Cold River Road.
Yep.
And then he's going to have an access off that road, too.
So this is going to be down the hill from the two houses that exist up there?
Yes, Andy.
Just, just up behind that new barn you built with the, what, the...
Yes, yes.
What is it on?
Ponzi.
Okay. Now I got it.
Thank you. Hey, Bill, just a point of clarification, does Howard have access to this?
Perhaps, no.
No.
So is that right-ofway along the stone wall, the one going south here?
It's going east and west. Oh, and yeah, and then down across the bottom of it, north and south, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's still, uh, stone wall going up the driveway, and then he takes his left, there's a stone wall there, he takes his right, and there's another stone wall there.
So what, oh, is the only road, the one on the western end of the, of the plaque that shows Belko on it, or no? That's not, that's not a road, that's an easement, right?
No, that's just easement, right, yeah, that's, yes.
Okay. So I know that we have Cold River Road at the end of the property, but I don't see that represented on the plaque.
No. In that little square up top.
Yeah, no, I see it there.
It doesn't, it doesn't go that far. The plaque doesn't go as far down as Cold River Road.
But is this, is this all mapped on here or no?
No.
It's just this?
This whole thing is, yeah, he's got that little X essentially up in here.
Oh, okay.
You're coming in, coming in, the trash facility is over here.
Is over here, yep.
And then there's a couple of houses up here, up on the hill.
Yep.
And so they're coming in that Hubbard Lane Place is on the, is to the right of their...
Yeah, I, I mean, I know, I've, I've been up there before. I just, I was trying to get oriented on the map, so...
The map just provides a really good detail of the actual lot itself.
Sorry, Andy? I, I heard your, your answer, Ted. Was your question or observation?
No, the, the, it's a very good detail of the actual two-acre subdivision, but this is just a little harder to follow because the scale is so small.
Right, because the outlined area, the Hubbard lands, the lands of Hubbard, that's the 190.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, now, now I'm, I'm getting oriented. I think somebody said this earlier, but it took my mind a minute to catch up to getting a visual from here. Now I understand, okay.
Actually, here's the better one right here.
Yeah, we have.
This one right there. Much better.
I have that one, I have that on here.
Pictures when I haven't called.
Thanks.
November of last year. Date I have, but I couldn't figure out how to find them, and they get run over because for recent, well, they had a date in November of last year, so...
So Andy, please, orient yourself, what are we looking at?
And, and the date on them is April 9 of 21. That's, there's bottom of the road.
Yeah, right.
There's the progress.
Yeah.
There's the existing two houses I was talking about.
Yep. And here's, this is, that's the undeveloped land, that's over two acres.
Ted, would you come up here just, if you mind, just to make sure we got it right?
But that, there's more than two acres. There's gotta be, because the whole thing is...
Here's the trash facility, right? There's your two houses.
Yes.
And this is the flat?
Oh, it's right here in this corner.
This is, this is, got it. This is much more than two acres.
Yeah, that's, that's seven.
This is seven?
Five and a half, seven.
Okay.
That's a hayfield. He's going to be right in this top corner, right within pile of rocks there, right there.
Okay. And it's gonna, it's going to, is it going to be contiguous to this area?
To my two acres?
Yeah.
It's gonna touch my two acres, yeah.
Okay.
So now where's?
This is the drive, this is the Hubbard Lane.
Lane, right.
He's going to come across here and up to here.
Okay, so what are you giving him here, an easement through here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, but that's not shown here.
Yeah.
Easement exists for some other property, but not, not...
Or does it exist already?
Yes, yeah, there's a road there already.
But I mean, it's a deed or easement?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Hey, Bill, do we have a plat of the entire property? No?
No.
So we don't have, we don't have a representation of where that easement currently is?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight that would show that.
Do we have anything on file that shows that? Okay.
That's a, that's a whole different research project.
But from a procedural standpoint, don't we need to be able to see that? Or no?
Just to clarify for me, Ted, this point right here, this is the, all right, this is the southwest corner. Is that right?
I'd say that's right here.
Oh, it's right there?
Yes.
So there's another parcel in here?
No, that, that would be his parcel.
You mean these? No.
This is my, this is my two acres and my personal house right here.
That's to this line there, right?
Yes, yes.
You're talking about the visual?
Actually, actually, you're right, you're right. This is, this is, this corner is right here.
Yes, this corner is where my pen is, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so this line in here, roughly, this is...
No, 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 because this is the house, this is the leach field. This, this corner is, this corner is right here. This is Leach Field.
We've got north going this way.
Yeah, this is north here.
Yep.
Here, north is going...
This way.
This way.
Yep, because that's east-west, so that's north going that way.
Yes, there we go.
You know what, I'm gonna make, I'm just gonna put a note, north is here. Just so that we get the right orientation.
So now, where is that corner?
That corner is going to be...
It's right here?
No.
No.
This is Leach Field, it's right here. Oh, actually, it's down here, it's down here more.
Yeah. So it's off this...
Yeah, that doesn't...
It's off the picture that we have.
Yes.
It's off the picture and...
Where, where is the, I'm sorry, where's...
We can't see the land on here, it's off the map.
I just took that as a swinging shot.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't, they provided us...
Okay, that's what you provide, so it's, it's up here.
It's this parcel right here.
No, it's not.
No.
No, it's over here, we have numbers.
Okay, that was not the impression that I got from, from this.
Yes.
Another small, I feel, no. Yeah, you know what, I think we gotta have a, we gotta have a more detailed plat, you know what I'm saying?
What are the other sheets?
Just to show that it shows what's on there in this, this scale here, so it's gotta be blown up, so that we can see the eat, so that we can see the right-ofways, because that's, that's the only thing.
That's what they gave, that's what they provided me. And this has nothing to do, this has, this is a building.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, that's, that's so we can get past that.
But I think the plat needs to show, well, we'll go through the checklist.
Yeah.
Anyway, and then that will help, help guide our recommendation to the Hubbards about what, what they would need to bring back. So let me just jump ahead a little bit, Ted, just so that we get some of the logistics out of the way. There will be a formal hearing. The earliest that that could be is January 4th, but you can ask us for whenever you think you'd be ready to have that hearing. And then at that point in time, we'll go over tonight all of the things that, that we need to be able to see. This is, this is an opportunity for you to tell us what you're looking to do, which you already have done, the purpose, and then to give us the documentation that allows us to evaluate that and say, yes, we're all set, ready to go, or you need a little, we need a little bit more feedback, here are the things that we'd like you to look at. Okay? So what we're going to do right now is we'll go through your checklist, because that is what you got from Bill. That was the application for the subdivision that you filled out. So we're going to go through this item by item to make, make sure that everything that we would need to vote on is, is present, okay? We're not voting tonight, tonight is an informational opportunity. So I'm just going to go through these, the, because this is what we'll need to do when we have the official hearing. Can correct me, Bill, if anything I say is, is erroneous, because...
I will, for sure.
Barbara usually guides this process, but she's not here tonight. So I'm just going to go through the box with the numbers one through eight, and we'll go through that in terms of making sure that we understand. So it says, boundaries and area of contiguous property of owner. So I think that that's one of the things that Andy was talking about. With, with respect to this, we, we don't see if it's gonna, but Ted's senior property, we need to see that on the, on the plat?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you follow me, Ted and Teddy?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I think it's outlined right here, the two acres that we intended for me to have, and I don't believe it touches my dad's parcel. It says, approximate boundary lines of existing house lot approved under permit EC-1-1417.
What's that, what's that permit?
That, I, I'm not sure, I just am reading it, but I'm pretty, I, I would imagine that would have been dad's subdivision that he got done while, while the farm was still in the trust.
That's not a permit number we would have issued.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know nothing about this.
What, what number was that, Teddy, that you read?
It says, it was approved under permit number EC-1-147, and you can see there's like lines with dashes in it where, where my two acres we'd like to have, and then approximate boundary line.
I'm not seeing that on my...
I don't think that's what they have.
That's not what...
Yeah, absolutely, come on.
So that corner, that stone wall, it's right there.
Oh, well, here, here's the problem.
So this, this, there's like a weird rectangle right here.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be the two acres, these dotted lines, and this is part of dad's two acres over here.
Okay.
So I think there was like a 50-foot right-ofway that was supposed to be intended to be left between the two lots, according to the, the surveyor.
So this metal...
Okay.
We hired a gentleman for all this, too, so I'm very unfamiliar with any of this process.
No, that, that's okay, that's why we, we do this.
Right here. Essentially, what we need is this, expand it a little bit.
Okay.
Into your, and with all these property lines and showing the easements coming in.
Okay, let me do that, that's not hard.
This corner is right here.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's all sugar roads that, it's like a, you know, a maze out there, you could wander around for days if you don't know where you're going, but so it all kind of is connected all along through, we're just, I'm just looking to, you know, hopefully have a driveway across there and up around the hayfield instead of straight through it, or, I mean, Hubbard Lane theoretically continues, as you can see unofficially, I guess.
Is this Hubbard Lane here?
Yeah, I mean, and it goes, you can pick a left, a right, a straight, or another right after that, of course.
Yeah, sure.
That's the general idea, so I, I'm judging on this, looks if that is a property boundary, I, I believe my two acres comes just flush with this stone wall right here.
And that would, that would make sense, because this, if this is the area, if this is the area between this property, your dad's property, and where this parcel is going to be carved out, that makes sense. And we've got that on here. I think, Bill, what would be helpful for the Planning Commission, and this is not a requirement that they have, but just for our orientation, if, if we could capture more...
Well, I just, I printed that just, just based upon kind of what I was seeing off that, so I think...
Thank you for doing that. I probably could have brought something.
Yeah.
Because what, when you file something new, you're going to need to file a Mylar that shows this new parcel.
Right.
And usually what we get is a representation of that Mylar.
Okay.
And what you got brought us were building plans.
Okay.
So like a surveyor is going to do a survey and drop like, here's what your, or an engineer's going to drop Mylar, say, here's what your, here's what your parcel's going to look like, so on your, on your deed, like, there'll be a parcel identification. Well, we have our building plans, it doesn't really show what we're looking for, so I think this, this was dropped off, I think, as anticipation of, but not actually the, the actual representation of what your property is going to be, because you, we need to see like what the property is gonna, property parcel's going to look like, and this doesn't really...
Well, I think this, oh, not to cut you off, sorry, but I think that's what this, this border is, is proposed to be.
Okay.
150 feet by 250 feet.
So Teddy, to, to Bill's point, usually this, this say here that it's...
This gentleman made this 20 years ago, Bill's been more helpful than he has already.
And usually, don't they indicate that this part of 190 acres is here?
Yeah, there's usually...
Okay, 175 acres, okay, over here, and that goes all the way around, right?
Houston, Fox, and the, the state forest.
Okay, so we have that, that's, that's good. We know that this is two plus or minus acres. This shows the separation between, now...
My house and this, this gross property and my property.
Okay, and this doesn't have to be marked, or does it?
This is part of the farm, this is my personal house.
Right, so this is part of the 175 acres.
Yes.
And this is separate.
Yes.
So I, I, oh, Bill left. My only question is whether this needs to be identified as its acreage, is it there?
Yeah, mine's...
It tells who owns it, so...
Right, but I mean, don't, don't we usually have an indication of what the acreage is? No? Yes?
I don't know.
It's all or not, I don't...
I reckon anyway.
It's a separate tax bill, I believe, if that helps.
It's like 2.2 acres.
Okay.
Don't, don't we normally have a, a survey that includes the entire...
That's what I was going for from the very beginning.
All of the property, 175 acres, that, because that's what's being separated, that something's coming out of the 175 acres, so we need to see the 175 acres, the piece that's coming out.
Okay.
On when?
So that's only going to be, that two acres is only going to be 1%.
Here's the one you guys just approved, as an example.
Yeah. So this is what Sherman was just referencing. We are looking at this proposed subdivision line, so this is being carved out of this bigger property, and so as Sherman was saying, this entire area is identified, and where is the marking on here for the acreage?
Five acres there?
Yes, five acre lot.
So is this a similar scale map, but it's just, it's easier to fit five acres on it?
Scale's different, yeah.
Yeah.
Scale's different. Really different, yeah.
So you may have to do, two would probably be the easiest, two maps.
Well, what I was thinking is...
One in a much smaller scale showing your season property.
And then, then the bigger one.
In relationship to the 175.
Right.
And then this one is fine as far as showing, then, then we can, one on top of the other, and then we got it.
Right. It, it's kind of like what you were doing for us over, over, yeah, here. Except this doesn't show enough detail for the Planning Commission to give you feedback and, and make a determination. It's got to be, yeah.
So how, so these, these costs is like five grand, that, how official does it have to be to, for the surveys?
You gotta file, file the Mylar.
Yeah.
So it's got to be official, I mean, this part has to be, I'm not sure how, the boundaries of the 175, right?
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
That's a Bill question.
Just not sure if it's something I can do.
Oh, it's a Howard question.
Howard, you should be here.
Hey, hey, Howard, we're gonna, we're gonna bring you into the conversation, because as the listener, we think, or former listener, we think that you would have the expertise to answer this question. What we're looking at, and Howard's a little bit in the dark, because he doesn't have any of these in front of him. So Howard, what we have is a set of, what'd you call those, building plans? That has the outline of a two-acre parcel, but it is, and it's marked relatively to scale, and it's on a topograph, but it doesn't show the whole context in which the, the parcel is located. And Ted was saying that it's in the context of 190?
175.
175 other acres with a neighboring property, so he has the 175 acres in which it's contextualized, plus there are other parcels within those 100, no, outside of those, carved out of those 175 acres, like yours...
They're in the center of it.
They're in, right. So how much, the question is, how much of that has to be represented and to what scale for the Planning Commission to be able to make a determination that we can see rights of way and easements and anything else, because Teddy's property is going to be up in the northeast section of the 175 acres, and there is a right-ofway that will be running from, is it the road?
So I have, I have the requirement...
So from Cold River Road?
The requirements are pretty, it's, it references something, so it says, "The sketch plan shall consist of a print or survey of the property on which shall be depicted, or which shall be accompanied by the information set forth in Article 3," which is the requirements on, for the, for the subdivision back.
Which is this?
Nope, the, the next page.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
It's this document, where we have the, right?
The sketch plan shall include that.
Okay.
That's, that's what it says.
Yeah, so that, that would be the, that would be an expansion of, of this, right, Bill? That we currently have, that would be the sketch plan, and then that's not the Mylar, the Mylar has to be officially...
The Mylar is the result of, of what we approve.
On the sketch plan.
So like, we talk about the waiver, so we, we go to waivers, things like the trees, you know?
We're gonna go over that in just a minute, because I think that they need, they need to have that feedback as well.
Yes.
So, okay, I guess, Howard, you can chime in, but I jumped the gun in asking you the question since Bill had the reference for us.
No, I think what I'm seeing and hearing is that, so like 190-acre farmer, he's going to just, he's going to be cutting out two acres of it, is that right?
That's right.
Well, somehow, we're, we're going to need to see that two-acre parcel with the bearings and distances and the, you know, the pins and, that should be surveyed, and at least it should be somehow tied in to Hubbard Lane Place, to tie it into something, or the nearest property, either your property, Ted, or something, to show the relation of it. We don't need to see the whole farm, but we need to see how it fits into, tie it into it, how do you get back to Hubbard Lane Place?
Well, that's, that's part of the problem, because the farm is so big that you, you can't fit it to scale and see what, how they want to plan the various, you know, well and septic and other things. If you take, if you have that expanded on the sketch plan, then you can't see how it fits into the other 190 acres. So the question was, what does the Planning Commission need, because this is a huge property that we're dealing with? This is, this is a little unusual, we're usually talking about 10 acres or smaller, well, maybe 20 acres or smaller, but the, so the question is, Bill just read the, the specs, and it seems like we need to be able to contextualize that, and maybe that doesn't need to be to scale, and then we need to be able to see any of the access roads that are running off of the proposed subdivision of two acres to the rest of the property. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, and it may, if it's, if it's a long, long distance, it may be something by the comment that says it's so many feet to Hubbard Lane Place or something, or just a broken scale showing, showing Hubbard Lane Place on one end and, and then the lot on the other, and to say that it's so many feet to get to Hubbard Lane Place somewhere, just, he doesn't even, certainly don't care about the whole farm.
How many feet it is from the, the property to get all the way, yeah, how, how long that road would be to get to Hubbard Lane Place, if that's where the easement begins?
Yeah.
So, so Howard, oh, you have that, Andy? I don't know, Howard, I don't think you've seen this, this is an aerial view, you can't see it, that's...
Is that the one that we got in the email? Is that the one that we got in the email?
Oh, yeah, that's right. That came in the, uh, packet. Yeah, so you have that.
I got it. I'm looking at it here and I, it's a situation where I, I'm not sure where the two acre lot is on that. I'm looking at.
Okay, so we can explain that to you. It's up in the northeast corner. So on the left, you should have Cold River Road. Is that right? Yeah, Cold River's over on the left, right? So Cold River's on your left, north is up, and Hubbard Lane is on the south side. So Hubbard Lane runs west to east, so left to right, at the bottom of your, well, I don't know if it's the bottom of your screen or not.
How does it print? That, that, I mean, depends on whether it print this way or?
Right.
So he.
But, um, you can rotate the map so that Cold River is on your left, and Hubbard Lane is, uh, on the bottom. And then north would be opposite that. If that's, if that's the orientation that you have, the parcel is looking in the, um, uppermost northeast, uh, corner. And it actually goes slightly off.
Off that picture.
The map.
Yep. So is that, so is that kind of a, is it above your house, Ted?
Yes.
You? It's right in line with my house.
Yeah. It's a little below it.
Right in line with, okay. Okay.
It's off that corner of that top upper middle.
Is it, is it gonna border your, your, uh, property line on the, on the north, northerly property?
No, Howard, there's a, there's a, there's a, I, I don't know how long.
A hundred feet in between.
Yeah, in between. So we have that on the.
Technically, it doesn't border this property.
No, they don't. They're not contiguous. They don't touch.
No.
There's a space in between. There's part of the farm.
Okay, okay. Well. I would think a surveyor would have some idea as to what, what he would need to, how you need to make that map to show what's going on, um.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll have to get Tim back on it then.
Yeah.
It's a site plan, not really.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Bill says.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and that's what, uh, uh, Bill was saying, yeah, that, uh, we're gonna need a, a surveyed, um, um, sketch plan, and then the Mylar will be built off of that. Okay?
Survey, they had touched base with Bill before he did anything.
That would be good.
Then you, you have a better, you know, every moment be in sync.
Right.
Yeah. At least a better chance being.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Howard, any other questions from you or any other observations?
No, I, I'm, I'm good with it. That's, uh.
Okay.
I'm sure Ted will come up with something.
Yeah. Uh, what might also be helpful, um, uh, when the Hubbers come back is if we can take this aerial map that Bill sent out to us and expand it and maybe just do a little drawing about where that's going to be situated. That's just a visual representation of how things are connected. And that would allow the planning commission to see what we may not be able to piece together in our minds by looking at the, um, uh, the sketch plan. Okay? All right, so let's go over the, um, uh, let's go over the, um.
Remaining items on the.
The remaining items, yeah. I'm just gonna read through, uh, the application, those eight, eight points, and then we'll go over to the, uh, waiver list. Okay? All right. Okay, so on, on, oops. I'll wait till you're done. Let's go.
I'm just trying to do the ordinance. You're, you're fine. I'm good.
You, you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we're just gonna go, uh, through these because these are the questions that will be at, asking at the hearing.
Yeah.
Those are one through eight. On the first page, that's called Form Number One, as opposed to Form Number Two, that you submitted. Do you want, you want this back to look at it? Yeah, because we have a copy, so you can take here. Uh, and I can, I can mark mine up and I can give that to you. We'll leave that one as it is for right now, but I have a copy here that I can mark up. Okay, so on Form One, we're gonna go over the boundaries and area of contiguous, uh, property of the owner. That's what, uh, Howard and Bill were talking about. So we see how, uh, the property of the one hundred and ninety acres fits in. Uh, we're also looking at boundaries and areas of, of the property to be subdivided. That's what's on this, you know, uh, site plan, which could be the sketch plan. Bill, so far am I doing okay?
Good.
Okay, so on that, uh, sketch plan, that's where you wanna situate, uh, the property to be subdivided from the, the other surrounding areas. And if we can show, as you have on here, that open space in between your property, that would be great too. So that looks, that looks pretty good. We just need to situate that in the bigger context. Okay? Um, the pro, proposed subdivision lines, those are on here, I think, already, but that, you just need to make sure that those are on the, um, um, uh, on the, um, subdivision, um, sketch plan. Uh, okay, name and address, professional preparer, that was on here. Need to have that again. Numerical and graphic scale of the plan, date, North Arrow, that's on here already, so it just needs to be followed. Um, existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, and utility easements. Okay, so that's where you're gonna have to have the. The, right, the driver, put that on there and show how, where it's going to go to, even though you don't see the whole distance, then you can have an hour or something, the, um, surveyor will be able to put that on there, say how long this road goes. And then we'll pick that up on another visual so that we can, we can get an understanding of, that it, it all can't be shown to scale on, uh, on the small, uh, map that you're giving us. But we will know, uh, how it connects, uh, utility easements, et cetera. Uh, number seven, proposed improvements, including roads, utilities, or utility easements. So you're gonna have some kind of a road or driveway off of the property, right?
Yes.
So we'll need to see, see that marked, at least as far as it can go. Okay, and then, um, rights of way, et cetera, and then the location map. All right? Great. So we're gonna move on to page two, Form Two. And, uh, on, uh, Form Two, uh, this is just basically a checklist of the things that we need to be able to see and what is going to be present. So, uh, in looking at, uh, number one, identifying, uh, the title of the subdivision, and you, uh, somebody circled a waiver. That, that's not usually something we can waive, because you have to title it for record-keeping purposes, so we, we have to call it something. So it, it could be, uh, Ted Junior's, uh, parcel, or, or something like that. We, we just, you need to, you can give it a name so that it can be identified from other parts of the property, okay?
It's identified here. Ted Harvard Junior's site plan.
Okay, right, but they're not asking for a waiver. So, so that's.
Change it to yes.
That should be yes, right.
Right, yeah, that was a fair on my end.
That, that, no, that's okay. This is what we need to, that's why we're doing this now, so that we can go through, uh, the hearing much more efficiently. Okay, same thing, name of the municipality. Uh, it should say Rutland Town.
Those.
Yep, and it does say Rutland Town, so that's yes, that's on there. Uh, name and address of the owner of record, uh, and subdivider. So that should also be yes, but you have to make sure that it's on there. Um, name and professional credentials of the plat designer. Okay, so that's something you need to pay attention to. That's number four.
It's on here.
Action surveying.
Yep, great. Um, boundary and area of contiguous total land, that's one that we have to, uh, expand on. That's what we were talking about previously, okay? Uh, number six, date, true north, a point in scale. I think those are all on there, right? So that's, that should also be yes.
Hey, Dana?
Yeah.
Excuse me, you know, number five, when it says boundaries and area of contiguous total land owned by the owner, I mean, that, that would be the whole farm. We don't really need the whole farm. I mean, in a big, huge parcel like this, we don't, we don't need to see the whole farm. It's just gotta be.
Uh, right, but we need some type of a representation, right? So it doesn't have to be scale.
Exactly, yeah.
So we probably, they probably wanna request a waiver for that.
Sure. Yep.
They just need to, they need to be able to put that on, um, in the context, right? So I'll put on here, uh, waiver and provide context. That will be a separate document from the, um, sketch plan, right? Separate document. Okay. Uh, all right. So I'm gonna check these off. Uh, number seven, identification of, uh, zoning districts. I think that's usually a waiver. We don't have zoning districts, correct?
That's correct.
So we use, that, we usually, we, that is usually a waiver. Okay, so I'm going to, yeah, I circled that. So what I'm doing here, Ted, or Teddy, I'm making the list on here of what your answers could be or should be.
Okay.
So, and you can have it, and we'll, we'll just make a copy for us so that we have it for next time. And you could, if you have, if you're putting notes on there, that's fine, but this will be your, your, your documented. Um, number eight, uh, proposed subdivision, uh, lot lines with, uh, bearings, distances. I think that's, is that already on there? Yep, all right, so we're okay with that. So I'm checking that off. Uh, streets, highways, um, easements, sidewalks, that's something, uh, that we need to make sure is present. Uh, and that also needs to be in the context. So, uh, I'm going to put a note on here, um, that, uh, they will be shown and, uh, ID'd on the, uh, ma- larger, um, sketch plan, yeah, on, on the larger context.
That's just those, those streets and highways or easements nearby there or sidewalks and alley. I mean, this is something that, to me, should be waived. I mean, it's, there's.
Okay, so we can do that.
Yeah, that's out in the middle of nowhere.
But they are gonna have to have an easement on the larger, um.
Yeah.
Uh, separate document.
Right away.
Yeah, right away. Okay, so I'm, I'll, I'll do that. That will be the same as number five. Okay, so I'm gonna link the two of those with a red line.
Aren't we gonna have to go through the survey that, uh, are the plaque that, that comes back?
Right.
Answer these questions again?
Right, but I'm doing this so that they.
Just so they know.
That, so that they know and they can make sure that all those things are in place. We will go through this, but it should be, it, we're taking more time tonight than it should take at the meeting, uh, when you come back, right? As long as everything's on there. Uh, on larger, uh, context. Uh, okay, number ten, uh, building existing proposed. Yep, you have those on there. That's probably okay. Um, uh, water courses existing and proposed. Are they on there? Are there any water? Is there any water on? This.
Like river?
Water or anything?
No.
There's nothing? Okay.
Not on that part.
Okay, so that will be okay. That will be shown. There, there's nothing, okay. Water course, none. Okay? So that's okay. Municipal and public utility easements, uh, rights of way existing and proposed. There aren't any, are there?
Velco.
Oh, Velco, okay, yep. Right, so you have to have Velco there, okay.
How they gonna get, that's on. How do they get power to the house? They have to have an easement, perhaps, bring power over or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that will be, uh, okay, so Velco and power to house.
Yep.
Okay, that's number twelve. Uh, sewer, uh, main and connections to municipal or community sewage system or onsite community or private sewage disposal. Um, onsite is the septic, right? So I'm just gonna write septic. Okay, so that's good. And that's actually already on there. Um, uh, water, number fourteen, water mains and connections to municipal water systems or onsite community and private water supplies lines, including sizes and elevation. Okay, same thing. Uh, that's a well, right? That's basically a well, and that's on there. Okay, great. Uh, drainage systems and connections to municipal community systems, uh, including sizes. That's, is that also septic? No.
No.
That's drainage for any culverts. Do you have any culverts on the? No, okay. So there are none, all right. Uh, parks and other open spaces existing and proposed. Okay, there are none, I don't think. None. Uh, other essential features existing and proposed. I don't think there are any other essential features. Anybody have any comment about that?
No, I think it's, it's fine what's here.
Yeah, what's there, that's what I would, I agree with that. Uh, location of all, um, trees onsite outlines, uh, of woods, open areas, and all other natural features. That's one we usually waive, Howard, I think, right?
Yes, exactly.
Because they have one hundred and ninety, um, acres of woods and fields.
Right.
We'd have to number them.
I, I, I think I'm going to suggest that they apply for a waiver on that. You're welcome. Okay. So that's. Uh, we'll, you'll take, you'll take care of that. I've circled that as a waiver. Uh, that's number eighteen. Number nineteen, all information, uh, specified in provisions nine through eighteen. Okay, that's the numbers over to the left side and coming over to the middle column, uh, on the right, and, um, hereof, and with respect to adjacent land of owner, and with respect to adjacent land of others, okay? So that's the distances, right?
That's essentially the hundred feet outside of each one of these borders.
Okay, so I'll just put that on it. A hundred feet.
It's supposed to be what, any features is supposed to be shown. Borders to that hundred feet.
On, on, oh, the borders of the parcel being subdivided.
Of the subdivided portion, right. The borders of the two acres.
Yep. Okay, um. So that's okay. Well, we'll make sure that that's okay. I'm gonna check that off, that that's what they need to pay attention to. Um, contour lines based on accurate, uh, ground surveys. I think those are.
Those are, those are vigilante waves.
On there? What's that? Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna check that off too. So those are listed, uh, twenty one, I think that's where I'm at. Um, typical cross-sections and profile of proposed grading, streets, highways, and sidewalks. There are no highways and sidewalks, so are we gonna, um, waive that?
Yep.
Or is that going to be part of the, there are, um, there are no highways and sidewalks?
Does the right of way have to be included in that or not? I would think not.
Uh, it doesn't say so. So it says no. So we're gonna ask for a waiver on that?
I, I would say that, yes, waive it.
So that's number twenty one, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Twenty two, uh, if a private sewage disposal is required, it shall comply with ten VSA nineteen seventy three. That's the septic?
It's a state permit, yeah.
That's a state permit, okay. So they just have to provide that, right?
Yep, have it, yeah.
Yeah. So you.
Right.
I'm sorry?
They have to get a state permit for that, for the septic.
Yeah.
That's essentially what we have.
That's the second copy of the, what I provided you guys is actually my septic designs, I think, I don't.
Oh, is that this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yep, I wasn't looking at that. Okay.
Later, okay.
Yeah, we'll look at it at the next meeting.
Okay, cool.
But thank you. Um, number twenty three, preliminary design, uh, of any bridges or culverts. So there are no designs. Okay, none, all right.
Waive it or?
Uh, well, there, there aren't any proposed. Which may be designed. It's not gonna be there, right? So number twenty three is none. So we can say, yes, there are none. Uh, twenty four, all parcels of land proposed to be, uh, dedicated to public use and, and of the condition of such. So that's also none. Right, so that, they, that. That's there, yep. Twenty four. Um, and twenty five, request, uh, requested waivers, variances, uh, and the reasons, uh, therefore. So we are requesting a waiver, so that's a yes, and I have put the notes. Y- y- yes. Did I say we?
Yeah.
I guess that was a royal we since I'm sitting up here with a pen. Uh, they are requesting the waiver, right? Uh, so they just need to, uh, I've written on here basically the, the information you'll need to, uh, request those. For each one that we have, you're requesting a waiver, we just need to have, um, a, a small, small statement as to why you're requesting the waiver. Okay? All right, and Bill can certainly help you with any of these questions. Okay, uh, is that it? Oh, no, twenty six, hang on. We gotta flip over the. Oh, no, 26, hang on, we got to flip over, the, there's another, there are another few questions, so oh, the final subdivision, yeah, flat, so this is what they're coming, because this is a, a minor subdivision, so this is the final one. So we have to do these
As long as everything's right, it'll be the final flat.
Right, so is, that's why we'll go through these next five or six. Number 26, all parallels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use and/or conditions, so there are none, right? So that's okay. And you can just, you can write none on there, on your, well, actually, that's on ours, nevermind.
Well, actually, it gets a yes.
I have a yes.
Yeah.
Because of a none, right. The length of all straight lines and deflection angles, radii, length of curves, tangent distances, and tangent bearings of each street, well, there are no streets. Right?
No streets, Bill, that's
So we say yes, and there are none. Lots with the subdivision numbered in numerical order and containing the area of each lot indicated in square feet. That's already on there, I think, so we're good. Number 29, permanent reference for monuments shown. There are no monuments on there, any other?
There's, there's landmarks on there, on the plans.
No, what's he, what's your surveyor got for your corner boundaries, pins?
Um, no, there's, there's
I think those are the monuments.
Those are monuments, okay, I'm going to write that on, okay, so survey pins.
This particular boulder, and then there's one along the side of the driveway, too, I think, we used as a marker, or as a bench plate or something.
The surveyor will put in
Yeah, he should, he, okay, the survey feels in the, what kind of monument you have, and
And I wrote it on here, so it should be serving
Pins or whatever.
It says benchmark northeast corner flat boulder elevation.
That could, could be, yeah. Okay, the survey, the surveyor will identify what they use, usually something that's per, more permanent, but
Yeah, a lot corner marker, this is 29A, shown thus, oh, they shall be of metal, at least three-quarters inch in diameter. So that's the same as 29, it's just an expansion of what 29 is saying. So it should say yes, so you have to just make sure that those survey pins are there, and that the other descriptions are represented. Monuments which shall be set at all corners and angle points of the boundaries in the subdivision. Monuments required by the town specifications for new roads, and all street intersections, et cetera. Okay, so those should all be yes. Just make sure that they're on the on the plat. On the, well, actually, yeah. Okay, any questions, we went through that pretty quickly, but
You said January 4th?
January 4th is the next time that we meet, so that would be the earliest we could have you come back. But you can let us know, you can let Bill know, whether that's reasonable, or whether you'd like to do January 25th, which will be the second meeting in January.
It'll take a little longer than I have to get all this together.
Probably. We don't have any requirement for you to come back on January 4th, that's just the earliest that we could do it. Okay, and so the other two meetings after that are January 25th, and February 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 15th, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
First, yeah, first, 8/15. Okay, so we're going to make a copy of this, and we'll give you the original that I just marked up again. And Bill, was that the original that I had?
I think I had.
From them? If we can just, if you can, I gave him the, I was just marking up my copy, I gave him the one that you had placed on my desk. Okay, while Bill's doing that, any other questions or comments for us?
Oh, not at the moment, I think we've got some work to do.
Okay, was this helpful?
Yes, very much so, appreciate you guys' time and really walking us through it, I said I'd never done one.
That, that's why we have people come and ask questions, and see how things are shaping up for you, so that when you're ready for, when the hearing comes, there aren't any surprises, and you know exactly what is supposed to be there, rather than sending you off blindly to go through the process, so. So Ted, you can connect with Bill about what your timeline's looking like? And we, we just need to know a week or 10 days before if you're going to make that, otherwise we'll postpone that to a future meeting.
So if I don't call you a week before the next meeting, 10 days?
Yeah, we won't put you on, right. And Bill, I think we need the original one that Ted and Ted have. And you know what? This isn't, oh, this is, yeah.
How are we going to be doing this, so?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They'll redo it, okay, that's fine.
Definitely, that makes the most sense, yeah, if you, if you use, use what you just learned to
Right, well
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, the one that I've put all the comments on, you can use to create your own new one.
Right.
You got another new one there?
No.
Bill, Bill can get anyone, yeah.
Or Bill's getting his exercise with us tonight.
All right, guys, thank you.
Is that what you need us for?
Yeah, he's going to give you that, but we're all set, that way you can put all of the information in clean copy.
Right, it'll be a lot more presentable for you guys, and would you like to make six copies when I do it the right way this time, or?
Not for the, not for the application, Bill will take care of that. We just need extra copies of whatever you're going to bring back in terms of the sketch plan, yeah.
Excellent, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Have a great night, don't forget to get that copy from Bill. Okay, while Bill's off, I think we can move forward a little bit with the agenda. And so we've already discussed moving the old business of the review of the property for the River Corridor to the January 4th meeting. Are there any announcements?
I was going to, Will Barber, as to where we stand on the some, on the short-term rental ordinance, and where we stand on the pocket park.
So my understanding to, to that question, is that that wasn't brought up at the last select board meeting?
Okay.
So there would be no, there would be no update, Barbara will give me enough information, but you can check with Bill in case my understanding is erroneous. But there were very few updates, the biggest thing was that we had a, at this meeting, she had updated the, the select board that we had a under new business, the, the subdivision proposal. Bill, am I, am I missing anything? There was nothing at the last select board meeting that was pertinent to the planning commission, correct? Okay, and so there, we don't have any announcements, except that now that we've changed our date, that the schedule for 2024 will be set with the first Thursday of January being the first of our meetings every three weeks.
Okay, question here, if I can just, is this form, our planning commission form, Bill, to your knowledge, does this have to comply to the state, or is this us?
This lines up with our subdivision regulations.
Right, right, no, I mean, the way that the question's worded, yes, no, or waiver.
It's worded that way in the ordinance?
Yeah.
So that's how it's worded.
I was going to say, it's too bad we can't have a not applicable. Because in a lot of these, that's more the correct answer than anything, is not, not applicable, you know, rather than yes, no, or waiver.
So I think what, if I may, I, I think this is on Barbara's future list, that we're, and the select board has made reference to this, that we have been given the theoretical go-ahead to revise our subdivision ordinance.
We're waiting for our attorney to review it.
That's right, so as soon as that is completed, we could change the form.
This would be the next step.
This would be the next step, yeah.
My, my interpretation of waived could be not applicable, I mean, if something is
When someone asks for a waiver, the way right now, when we do a warning for a subdivision, we have to, we, I have to list every item they're asking to be waived.
And there has to be an explanation for it.
Oh, okay.
Something that doesn't exist, doesn't really need to be waived, right?
If they request a waiver of 10 items, we have to list the 10 things that are requesting waiver in the warning.
In the warning, okay, yeah.
So if it could be, so I, I don't, that maybe, I may say it like that, but if it's, if it's like, there's no water courses, we're requesting a waiver, don't request a waiver, there's no, it's not being shown, because they're not there, so it's a no, so, but like, when it comes to the trees, that's a waiver, so, yeah.
Right, but right now, this document is based on the old
The current.
Yeah, well, the one that has not been proposed for implementation.
Right.
Right, so what we have, the work we've already done, i- is not necessarily in full alignment with these questions.
The work we have done is not in alignment with those questions, because that refers to zoning, we've taken that out of the, we've taken that out of the update.
Right.
But I haven't even, I, I haven't even looked at those to try and update them, because I, I, I don't, I don't want to take the time until I hear back from Kevin, so.
Right, so in, in order for us to update this, we have to have a new set of, right?
Yeah, because you really have to understand, have to fully understand this, if you're looking at it to see if they've met the requirements.
That are in the subdivision.
But no, sometimes means not applicable, and sometimes it means I didn't do it. So you have to know what, the details behind the question.
But there are changes in our subdivision ordinance that we don't actually control any longer, and so either those questions can be removed, or it can be put as not applicable, it may be a state requirement, and then, you know.
There's things I think it refers to in there that were, were important, and that we had authority over when these were created.
Right, and we could change the thing about the trees. Because we tend to waive that all the time, but, but I think that they, we, once that is approved by the attorney and the select board, we could go ahead and change our forms a little bit. I'm sure you're excited about that.
We're a ways away from that.
Yeah. Okay, so no further announcements, let us move on to the minutes of November 16th, 2023. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes. I was not there, so I will.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that is, oh, uh-oh, oh, no. That means that we have to postpone these minutes until
Yeah.
The next meeting. Okay, so there's no quorum. No quorum at this meeting.
Did I hear Andy withdraw his motion? I think I did.
I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
Withdrawn. Uh, no quorum at this meeting from attendees on 11/16, okay. So those will be postponed until January 4th. All right, any other business to come before the commission this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw a move.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Sherman, thank you.
Andy.
Andy. All right, we're officially adjourned.